Welcome, everyone. If we could stand and say the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have had no visitors wishing to speak. We did have one piece of communication to the board, which was from a resident regarding a swim coach. Did you guys all get that? That was it. Special committees. I'll report for the audit committee.
Before you go, is there a comment about the swim?
Was it a swim coach or was it a swim club that they wanted?
Swim club. The varsity swim coach is trying to organize a swim club and trying to work with the school district. There was a parent who expressed support for that.
At the middle school?
I'd say it was all for all.
Yeah, typically, well, I just, I'm filled with knowledge about how swim clubs work because I just met with them today. But typically, it would be like the way you see any kind of youth sports program run. So it starts maybe as early as fourth or fifth grade and it goes all the way up. And there's, you know, leagues and tournaments and things that exist. So the coach is enthusiastic and looking to build something that would be housed here in the middle school. So we had a nice conversation today about it.
It's from, yeah, it's from Debbie.
Special committees. We did have the Audit and Transportation Committee. I can report for the Audit Committee. We met on July 13th. We are, the auditors are required to have a pre-audit conference with us before they start their audit, where they report to us about what, who the team is that's coming in, if there's been any changes in the accounting rules and regulations over the past year, and what they are going to be looking for. So we're meeting as a committee back again on September 15th to go over their draft audit. And then they will come and report to us at the second meeting in September, and we will look to adopt the audit the first meeting in October. Did I get that correct, Mrs. Conley?
100% correct.
Great. Transportation?
Yep. We met July 28th. And we met with First Student and their app developers. First Student is working to develop their own app to track bus arrival times, which would also give notifications and things like that to parents. We're actually going to be part of the beta testing for this app that they're developing in October. It's going to be a small group that has yet to be determined. And if all goes well, then the developers would probably have it rolled out to the school district in December. You know, we talked about a lot of different things about, you know, it has some different abilities in terms of the notifications and, you know, having your kids all on there with the different stops and stuff. But we did discuss security, that, you know, there would be different ways to prevent unauthorized access to bus stop information. And it wouldn't have any route information. It would just be the bus stop, your child's stop location. So, you know, we're very comfortable with that. But more to come on that as they develop it. Anything else? Did I miss?
I would say the only other thing is that we were going to start it in the middle school.
Yeah, there's the beta test in the middle school, yeah. That was, that would be the kind of the safest option. High school really wouldn't give us a good group. And elementary school, we don't want anybody too worried about the kids. Middle schoolers have been around for a while.
Yeah.
And we actually, we'll later talk about it, but there's a potential presentation on that in October on our board topics during superintendent's report. All right, so we're getting this to the superintendent's report. Well, great, thank you. The first thing on the agenda is the capital project update. So I'd like to talk a little bit about the, you know, educational instructional intent of what we're doing with the project. Then we have Mrs. Conley, who will take care of the financial piece. And then Jerry Young and Jim Hickey are here to talk a little bit about the schedule and scope design and really the schedule of approval and what we're looking at between now and December 13th, the proposed vote date. So to kick us off, you know, we always want to keep our mission in mind. And I think it's important because when you look at our mission, you know, our goal is to allow our students to excel in a dynamic world, to have them be able to reason, problem solve, apply, communicate, collaborate. And when you look around the room, we're in day two of our new teacher orientation training. So you can see all the anchor charts that are on the walls from the things that we've been training our new teachers in, aligned to our thoughtful classroom principal, or excuse me, thoughtful classroom teacher framework. And a lot of the stuff we're talking about with the teachers is, how do you get the kids to go up the taxonomic ladder to the higher levels of thinking, like synthesis and evaluation? So that aligns with our mission. What we're trying to do really in line with that mission is bring our high school facility in line with that. So we have some tools to promote some of the things that we believe in. So as we get going here, just as a quick overview, we're really looking at high traffic spaces, cafeteria, kitchen, community gathering places, areas where kids are going to spend a lot of time, brightening them, bringing them up to date, bringing them up to speed. We're also looking at that lower level that's adjacent to the cafeteria, where we have our science, I'm sorry, where we have our technology and our art rooms, and then on down the music wing. So we really have a focus here, if you look at the last project, where we did the science rooms. And now we're looking at technology, art, both fine arts and performing arts. And, you know, obviously, we've been working on mathematics. We really have sort of a STEM flavor, or what some people call a STEAM flavor when you add in the A for arts. And the goal is to really create a space where our students can be involved in some of the things that they're going to face in the job market in the future. You know, the jobs that a lot of our kids who are in school now are going to be applying for don't even exist yet. And there's things that are, you know, in renewable energy. There are things that are in, you know, circuitry. There are things that include additive manufacturing, 3D design. You know, right here in our backyard in Buffalo, you can see there's an estimated 10,000 STEM-related jobs that they think will be available in the next five years. And they don't have people who can fill them. They don't have a workforce for them. So we want to make sure that our kids are ready and prepared and well-rounded to be competitive in this market. When you look at O-NET, which is, you know, a nationwide sort of database for employment, and you look at the job descriptions for any job on there, most of them include skills that include literacy and collaboration, communication, and problem solving. So we're looking to have a facility that fosters those types of things, too, where our kids can be involved in engineering, reverse engineering, advanced mathematics, flexible automation, you know, robotics, programming, all of those things. So that's really the focus instructionally of what we're looking at. In addition, our beloved high school also needs a little bit of a facelift just to make it warmer and more attractive and more pleasant to be in. So we've also proposed some corridor work to brighten it and make it more energy efficient with LED lighting in the corridors. We're looking at new lockers, paint, you know, a new entrance way that would make it more appealing, more warm, inviting, but also preserve the architectural integrity of it and the historic beauty of it, but bring it up to, you know, the 21st century and make it a place where people feel most comfortable and willing and able to learn. So that's sort of the instructional vision. We know we have a very, very high-quality music program. I think what this project proposes is that we provide a facility that's just as high-quality as what the product is at this point. So we're looking to, those rooms have not been addressed, I don't think since at least the 80s, maybe. I can't remember the building condition survey off the top of my head. But they're, they're very old. And we've been able to, I guess, make do and produce wonderful musicians and a love of music and the arts from those rooms. So I think that would be a welcome addition to our program. We've also talked about computer labs for our CTE department. And then we have the turf field and the track, you know, because that's coming to the end of its useful life. So that's really the broad scope of the project. Jerry is here to talk about, you know, the calendar of what we're asking the board to do. Remember, we had a very inclusive capital construction committee that took a lot of time looking at the building condition survey and the data that is required by State Ed, not that, and also our facilities data that we keep in-house. And the scope that we're looking at right now is a broad scope. And that's what we're asking you to adopt. And then later on, we're asking the voters to approve. And then there's about eight to 10 months after that, where detailed plans end up getting worked out as we move towards the, I'm sorry, the bid and then eventually the construction. So to make sure I don't neglect the other areas that are in the scope, we also have talked about our elementary school's water distribution system. And our middle school, we've talked about new windows. And the high school will also include new windows. But we're working very closely with the State Historical Preservation Society. And they would make sure that anything we put in is architecture, preserves the architectural integrity of the high school and also, you know, matches the current codes and brings it up to date and current to the 21st century. So Jerry, the floor is yours. If you'd like to talk about the schedule and the scope. And then we can turn it over to Mountain. Mrs. Conley.
I think you've got scope covered. We talked about the scope at the last meeting. The capital committee made a recommendation for a scope. Two parts of the schedule are the pre-referendums portion and then after the referendum passes, hopefully. There are a couple of things that need to be done, including the State Environmental Quality Review Act, SECPR. That's one of the things that has to be done. You'll see that that has to be completed at the October 18th meeting so that the vote can take place December 13th. There'll be some general presentations to the public and a public presentation that'll be part of it. So this is kind of before the vote. And it goes into just kind of all of the legal steps that need to take place. I don't know if anybody has any questions. It's a pretty boring slide, and I apologize for that. This next one is a little bit more exciting. And this one talks about the phasing of the project, okay? And you can look at it, the first stage we're going to get is going to be the track and turf, because that's a clean scope. We know exactly what we're looking to do. There isn't a lot of design work. We're staying within the boundaries of what you have. We've worked with the athletic director, and we will continue to. There's probably about a two-month period before we then complete construction, or start construction documents. So there's about four months before we send it into the state. Because it's a single-phase review, it's just architectural, it'll get through the state a lot faster. If it had mechanical, electrical, and plumbing as portions of it, it would take, well, right now, it's taking less. But the state education department facilities are going through some turmoil. They lost their director. We could potentially be losing our project manager. So we're still leaving it at the eight-week period, or eight-month period. The high school phase two, this is where we're going to sit down with the administrative, Tony and Melanie, being part of our committees with the art department, the music department, the computers, the kitchen, everybody. And we'll spend probably three or four months working individually with individual departments and individual people within the Amherst district. This is where we work out all the details. So there's probably a four-month period. After that four-month period, we do what we consider construction documents. That's where we take the designs that district has approved, and we convert them into documents that the contractors can bid on. And we then submit those to the state. And then you're looking at about an eight-month review. So turf and track would be done, work would be done summer break in 18. This work would be bid, and then the heavy construction would begin the summer break of 19. And we would actually have a third phase that would go into the summer of 2020. So it takes a long time for one of these projects to get through. And when you're talking about something in the $29 million range, you can do about $10 million to $15 million a summer. If you try to do more than that, the contractors just can't get it done. That's our overall schedule. I do want to say that the superintendent made a phone call, used his charm, and got our building aid. Remember, I was talking on maximum cost allowance in the building aid units. And there was a mistake with the school. You had maximum cost allowance of 740 at the high school, 740 building aid units. We got it up to 1,040 when they realized that they didn't include the 1990 addition. But they still, it was still wrong. So I sent a nice letter in, which she said she would get to in four to six months because she's so far behind. And the superintendent called, and wow, all of a sudden, I had the calculations there. And we got it up to 1,229, which wasn't quite to the 1,300 that I was looking for. But it's good enough to get us the maximum cost allowance. So we're in good shape there. Stakeout back to us. That's kind of the overall schedule. That really is my two slides. Does anybody have any questions on the before the referendum or the after the referendum side of it?
If you go back one, I just wanted to highlight something on the previous slide. If you look, what we're, what we're looking to do then would be in September, having the board approve the project's scope, which would be the spending plan and the general outline that we, that I just talked about. And then after that, you know, we would have several months to make sure we communicate that scope to the broader community in preparation for the public vote on December 13th. So this, although this, again, seems like it might be happening a little quickly, I think what we're, you know, what happened at the capital construction committee really started last summer, when you all toured the facilities as we're getting ready to do this August. And then the preliminary conversation started about an upcoming project. And then was really accelerated in late February, early March, when the committee started going through all the documentation and identifying the needs based on the building condition survey. So that's really what we're looking at in terms of the timeline, then. The real fund starts after December 13th, pending approval. You know, that's when we get, roll our sleeves up and start really looking at the details and getting the paperwork submitted to State Ed and, you know, getting the bids and those type of things. The challenge really from, I think, you all, as well as your representatives on the capital committee, was to try to make this as cost-neutral to the community as possible. So that's where Mrs. Conley comes in in the next part of the presentation.
The next slide is going to show you just the project highlights, the main areas that we're focusing in on and the associated budgets with those areas. Also to add, as far as the site work with the high school and middle school. The parking lot out here in the middle school will be addressed, as well as tennis courts throughout the district. Some of them are a safety concern at this point. So we do want to address those. So this is just, again, the overall scope with some budget numbers associated with those various general areas. The total project cost, again, $29.5 million we are proposing. For Amherst, our building aid ratio is just under 75%, 74.7%. It's a form of state aid that we receive on capital projects. So for every dollar that we spend in principal and interest, Amherst gets back 74.7 cents on that. We also do have $1.3 million in reserve funds, both capital and repair reserves. We started the repair reserve to address the turf and the track a few years ago. So we are applying, or hope to apply, $1.3 million in those reserve funds towards this project in an effort to try to make it as cost-neutral as possible to the taxpayers. Another initiative to try to maintain that cost neutrality is the borrowing and the way we're going to do that. We are looking to do a five-year BAN, bond anticipation note. It's a one-year term at an estimated 1% interest. And then a 13-year bond after that. And again, with the estimated interest of 2.125%. We've been working with our financial advisors, capital markets, to try to outline a plan that will align this borrowing with when our debt, our current debt is falling off, which is in 2024, '25. So we want to hold the line on our debt service costs until that point, when the debt drops off, and then plug in this new project without having too much of an impact. So again, capital projects are excluded from the tax cap. So this would not apply to the 2% tax cap that the governor has imposed on schools and municipalities. The local share, the impact would be slight after '24, '25. It would be $256,000 or 0.75% on our current levy, 17%, or 17 cents, I'm sorry, based on our current levy and current level of assessment. So by the time 2024 comes out, we all know that will change. But to give people an idea, how that would impact your tax bill, we have the table there with the three assessed value levels and the daily cost of this proposed project, going from 5 cents to 9 cents, depending on the assessed value of the property.
Couple of things to note here, I think, Mrs. Conley. If the 256 is a worst-case scenario between now...
That's correct.
And that is applied in 2024, '25, correct?
Right.
That's when that would start to enter our debt service.
That's when that would start. From the time of vote to 2024, there will be no impact. That's why we're doing the borrowing in the fashion that we are the BANs. But that would be the worst-case scenario. We may be able to apply some reserves or fund balance towards that portion to offset it, so it doesn't have an impact. But this would be the worst-case scenario. The capital committee's goal was to try to make it as cost-neutral as possible for the taxpayers. We'll continue to do that into, even into this project. Now, it's important to note. So with that, I guess we'll take any further questions for any of us.
I just have a nippy question. Our building aid ratio?
Yes.
What was that last year?
It was the same.
It was?
About the same. I can double-check on that, but it's about, roughly been about the same. We used to get a lot more under previous projects because we had a reorg incentive aid, and it was in the 90% area. It was well over 90%. And that expired just before this last project that we did.
And, you know, you and I were talking about that the other day. That was something that was supposed to last for about 10 years.
10 years.
And it ended up lasting about 25?
Yes. Yeah, yeah, we got it.
The building incentive and reorg.
We were very fortunate to have it longer.
And we haven't, you haven't heard that, whether we have to have wooden windows in the high school probably?
No, again, I think...
That qualifies as one of those details we'll work on as we begin the project after approval.
So that's kind of way enough.
Yes.
Right.
The way I heard it earlier, I thought it was somebody was going to get back to you. I didn't understand. Sorry.
Yeah, there's all kinds of communication that we'll have to have with SHPO, the State Historical Preservation Society, regarding the high school because it is classified as a historical building.
We appreciate the capital committee's hard work over the past year. We appreciate the board's support and the community's support in December. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for being here tonight. Appreciate it. I know we'll be in contact soon. And of course, if there's any questions that come up when you're not at the table thinking about it here, certainly feel free to reach out and ask. Again, you know, the biggest thing is we're looking for voters to approve the broad scope. And then that's when, after we have the voter approval, we start working on the very specific details. It would be presumptuous to do that before the voters have a chance to say whether or not the project is feasible. So that's why the timeline looks the way it looks. Thank you.
I know you're going to have an exciting meeting from here on in, but I'm going to probably pass.
Good night.
See you later.
The next item that we have in the superintendent's report is the board topics for the school year. You have a copy in the packet that was provided to you there. I'd like to say that, you know, this is a working document. It's a fluid document. We can't necessarily predict now in August, you know, what may happen from a state or federal level. This is, I'd like to have flexibility to be able to, you know, consider each agenda on a meeting-by-meeting basis. That's really why we have the agenda-setting meeting in place. But this is a rough outline at this point. One thing I'd like you to take a look at is January 3rd. I was waiting to hear back from the town assessor and his office. The town is planning to do a reevaluation this year in the town of Amherst. And when I met with Dave Morano and Mrs. Conley during my entry plan in March, Dave mentioned it, and he said he'd be willing to come this school year and speak publicly about what they're doing with the reeval and the assessments. And so today, Mrs. Conley and him were in contact. And they believe that January 3rd would be perfect timing for such a presentation because that will be just before our residents start to receive communication from the town regarding the reeval. So the timing would be perfect for that. So we can pen in or pencil in the town assessor and GARR Associates, which are the company they consult with to work on the assessments and the reeval as a presentation during the superintendent's report on January 3rd. At this point, I guess, the conversation, you know, again, keeping in mind this is a fluid document, would center around, you know, any things that you think we should move from one spot to another, the timing of things, if there's something that you believe is necessary that we haven't added here. Couple of things to highlight, I think, would be the new superintendent's student cabinet. So that will be getting off the ground this fall. And we hope in, I shouldn't say we hope, in the first presentation, you know, to answer some of the questions about how the group was formed, how the students were selected, what our goals are. We're really hoping that that is a body that's governed by the students, and they take responsibility and ownership for the meeting agendas and, you know, taking a responsibility for functioning as well as group. I certainly will be a big part of that. And then we'll have liaisons that come here to the meeting to report out to the entire board about the things that are discussed there. So that's a new addition. We're still continuing with the tradition of having the superintendent's student task force, the super, I'm sorry, superintendent's task force, where we'll recognize our students and teachers of the month from the high school. And Mr. Pigeon has talked to me about how he would like to streamline that process with the student leaders that are involved in that. So those are some new and revised things that we have on here.
Is that going to be a combination or combined with the superintendent's student cabinet?
Separate. So you'll notice...
And we're going to keep the title of task force? Because are they really doing tasks or are they just, like, a part of it?
With the one that recognizes the student. Yeah, we could take a look at that.
Because what they actually do.
It's a good idea. Because I don't think that would tell you what they do.
Right.
Yeah.
It's more of a recognition.
Yeah.
In the meeting with Mr. Pigeon, he did mention about changing the name to Pathfinder.
Yeah, I know he has a, you may recall, the middle school for a number of years has had a transition program that's referred to as the web leaders. Now, this year, as that group of kids that started that program in the middle school goes to ninth grade in the high school, they're continuing that, and they're doing some pretty good training later this month that I just became aware of. And in preparation for transition to high school with the freshmen, some of the things we do with our eighth-grade group as they get ready to go to high school in terms of fall visits and, you know, some awareness about the programming we have in our high school. And that group is combined with the Pathfinders, and there's a name for them. So I think the... So I, I think there is going to be a new name coming for that.
And not that it would be a topic, but maybe it was also for us to also look at in the future, trying to find a way to acknowledge students and the profession of the little children as well.
Yeah, I mentioned to-
So we just don't focus on the high school, we got two, two elementary schools, we don't really want to be around. Steve, is a teacher-
Right.
-going to be a part of that as well?
I mentioned to the administrative cabinet today that I'm starting with the high school because, you know, the age of those students lends itself a little bit more to that. And then I'd like to expand as we look at years two and three down the road into the middle school and into the elementary schools. And I have some ideas about how that might look, but I'd like to get this up and running first to make sure it's successful before I expand too far. But that's, that's a great idea.
I was thinking along those of the new task force type, not necessarily.
Good point.
And is there going to be a, I guess I was trying to figure out here how the, will the building updates include the curriculum and assessment times? Or is that, how is that going to be addressed?
Yeah, there's a couple of things. We're, we're going to produce the data portfolio again, so you have that comprehensive. I think we're, we're looking at going digital with that this time. So, you know, it will likely be on our, our site where you, we can look at it, so we don't have to print all the paper that encompasses that. The second thing is, you'll notice there's an elementary curriculum update and a secondary curriculum update in October. Really exciting things that have occurred this summer under the leadership of our curriculum leaders and Dr. Schoenfeld that we're excited to share. And then I actually said to the principals today that I would like them to get together and have a brief conversation about how we might structure the building updates to best communicate what's going on in the buildings. And one of the, one of the proposals that came immediately from that comment was that there may be a focus on program at the elementary level as opposed to specific building things that are going on. And they were, started the conversation already immediately after our cabinet meeting. So that's something I'd be able to give back to you prior to those, but I wanted to give them a little input into how to structure those so that they meet everybody's needs. So I'll have a proposal for that for us to consider soon. And again, this is a living document. There's some things that we, we've predicted. Dr. Schoenfeld has been asked by the state to serve on the federal Every Student Succeeds Act think tank, which has met twice already this summer. And I, I think he has some good information from not only the federal level, but the state level to share with our community and the board. So we have that on there, but that's also something that is not necessary, it's a moving target right now. So we may need to be a little flexible with information that is coming out and when we look to provide it. The state is also looking at a strategic plan for implementing the new science standards, so that again is a moving target. But when we have more information about that, we'll certainly want to talk about it here in a public meeting. So there's a little bit of flexibility here. I certainly don't want to create marathon meetings for us, so that's why there's some areas where there's topics that, there's only one or two of them to give us some flexibility to add down the road as we get into January and spring.
A couple of suggestions I just had was maybe some of these committees we have, like alternative funding committee or transportation, or even, you know, advocacy, maybe have some more, like a formal report, you know, what's going on in those versus just a committee, you know, a meeting update type thing. The other thing I said, you know, I had sent in as a suggestion is maybe having a technology update more than just once a year, maybe trying to have it twice, given we seem to get hit up in January and, you know, I think you're still on the technology committee. They put so much time, you know, these full-day sessions, you know, throughout the year that I think there's a lot more we could hear, you know, than just, you know, the ones a year that we're here. Those were just suggestions I had.
Well, and one thing that you, as you brought up, technology certainly will occur in the near future is we will get our smart schools bond plan together, and that will require, you know, a public hearing, and that will require information to be presented publicly. So that certainly would be something that would fall under that. That's a good suggestion.
And what about district goals? Did I miss that?
We just don't have a strategic plan.
Right, but-
The board goals, not, no, that's going to come from the strategic plan.
Okay.
Yeah, so I actually put periodic strategic plan updates on here-
Yeah, I saw that.
So that we're constantly keeping you updated on the goal development. And we would love to, the committee's meeting August 29th, and they'll probably spend the equivalent of two full days going through the research that's been compiled since, you know, last April. And then they're going to look to identify the big rocks, so to speak, the, the big initiatives we want to focus on. And then there'll be a subset of that committee that will be the writing team, that will actually take those big rocks and write the action plans, and then we'll be looking to bring that back here, you know, for official adoption by the board, and then we'll start communicating that out. That would also, that will also give each building a framework for school improvement planning, also aligned with the new principal evaluation rubric we're adopting, which is the Thoughtful Classroom Principal Framework from the same producers of our framework for teachers. So everything seems to be coming into alignment, but we certainly will give periodic updates on that and that work. I, and in the line, in, in speaking about advocacy, I completed a survey today from NISCUS, the New York State Council of Superintendents, that they're already gearing up for advocacy for funding for the current year, and they were looking for us to identify, you know, our priority, our priorities as it relates to tax cap and funding and aid, and so it was, it was a pretty comprehensive survey, and I'm sure they're gathering that as they get ready for their advocacy movement. So those are good things to have, definitely to consider as some of those things evolve.
Should we consider having advocacy then more than the, the first half of the school year then to gear up? Since we're trying to advocate for changes to the upcoming state budget, which tends to come out in January, is that-
Well, the last time that I recall the board considering advocacy, there, it was one of the bowls. It was a board bowl. And from that board bowl, I think there was some work that was done in line with that. So I think that would be something that we would definitely want to consider as a board bowl, continuing with advocacy, and then if we end up updating or providing some presentations, that would make sense. And certainly, there's the annual legislative breakfast early, late February, early March, where they start to put together the formal advocacy plans, but they always caution us every year or two, you know, make this a year-round thing and not just, you know, in February and March. So we, we should consider that. Good point. The last item I have in the superintendent's report is just the, the board retreat is scheduled. So we are scheduled for October 5th from 5:00 to 9:00. Dinner will be served, so please come hungry. And we'll be right here in the boardroom. It's more of a working session for us. Kathy Wegman, who is a retired superintendent from Marion Central Schools, will be here. Kathy was on the committee that wrote the rubric that is now the NISCUS Model Superintendent's Evaluation Tool that we've adopted. So she was actually one of the authors of that, and she'll be providing the training for us on how to use that. And in addition to that, Michael Horning Jr., who's a proud Amherst alumni, will be here from PLS Third Learning to help us get started with the technology platform that is, that he created aligned to that evaluation tool. So that should streamline the evaluation, it'll digitize it for us, and will help us get up and running with that. So that's scheduled for October 5th. That's all for the superintendent's report.
We need a motion for new business.
I'll make a motion for new business, items one-
Any good statement?
Uh.
I'll wait to hear.
Okay. Do you want to look through and find which item it is while we're doing that?
F2.
Motion for items, um, one, A through J, two, A through DD, three, C, D, F, G, I, and J.
And I will be saying, two. I don't want to.
F2.
You want us to do them separately?
No, you don't have to. I don't think. I'll second the motion and change it. Misses, sorry.
Okay, I, I, before we vote, I just want to point out, we are approving our tax rate for the upcoming year, and that tax rate has actually decreased from last year by just under a percent, but it still has gone down from what it was last year, so just wanted to point out. All right, all those in favor of new business items, one, A through J, two, A through DD, and three, C, D, F, G, I, and J, please say I.
I.
How was it again? Motion carries five, zero.
Minus one.
Minus one.
I'd like to welcome Mr. John DeAngelo, who's in the crowd, to our administrative team. He was just in that motion to be approved as our new director of special education, and I see his well-behaved and wonderful children are here waiting patiently. So welcome, Mr. DeAngelo.
Congratulations a lot.
Very proud and humble. Thank you very much for the opportunity.
Thank you. The other thing to note, too, is we are accepting tonight the retirement of Mike Tomczak, who's been with us for more than 30 years, so he will be retiring in December, early December, so just wanted to note that as well.
Definitely big shoes to fill, so we will need a plan in place for that transition. Also like to recognize Mrs. DeAngelo, who's here. I mentioned the children, but the whole family's here.
Well, she's well behaved, too.
Mrs. Custody, do we have any follow-up action items?
I do. Ms. Conley to discern last year's building aid ratio and get back to the board, potentially change the name of the superintendent's task force, and Superintendent Penelope to get back to the board on what the building updates might include.
Very good. Very good.
All right, we then need a motion to convene to executive session.
I'll make a motion. I'll make a motion that we convene to executive session for the management regarding tax of carry and employment of a particular person.
All those in favor? I guess, motion carries five, zero. All right. Need a motion, I want to be there. Guess we're all set.
Do we have all our motions?
Yeah, we're all in motion now.
I wish I could adjourn.